In accordance with our official clock there on the wall, for those watching from home. And Bella, I would like to note that some meetings are recorded and broadcast live. And meetings can be reviewed live on local channel one ninety-two. Minutes will be available after being approved at a coming meeting of the select board. My name is Nate Boudreau, I am the town administrator calling this meeting to order for the sole purpose of the election of a board chair as we do at the beginning of each fiscal year. As we did not have our first meeting in July due to how the Independence Day holiday fell. This is our first meeting, so here we are going to have the vote. I am going to call for nominations for a board chair.
Motion. Like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Nominate Jeff as a chair.
There's been a nomination for Jeff Williams, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a mo- a nomination and a second, are there any other nominations for board chair? Are there any other nominations for board chair? With that, I will close nominations for board chair, and this will be a roll call vote. Please state your vote.
Yes.
You're gonna say his name.
Jeff, one, I vote for Jeff, yes.
Okay, let's defer it.
Certainly is.
I vote for Jeff.
There's only one nomination.
Yeah, I know, it's like, whatever.
I vote for Jeff.
I think I'll vote for Jeff.
I'll abstain.
All right. Mr. Chairman, congratulations, you can run the rest of the.
Vote for Jeff. That's weird, we haven't done it that way before, so whatever.
Something new.
Hey, you know, it all works, whatever.
Okay, then we will move to the next part, which will be nominations for vice chair. So are there any nominations for vice chair?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Katie for vice chair.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Katie.
Motion made for Katie Young, is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any questions, discussion, et cetera? All right, we'll take, is, a roll call vote for all of these actually, correct? Okay, Peter?
Katie, yes.
Chris?
Abstain.
Okay, Heather?
Katie, yes.
Okay, Jeff, yes.
Katie? I vote for Katie. That's so weird, anyway.
Should get shirts.
Yeah, I know, I voted for her.
Next we would pick out nominations for the clerk of the select board, do we have a nomination for that?
I would like to nominate Heather.
I'll second that.
Let's keep things consistent.
Motion made and second for Heather, rounding it. Any discussions, questions, seeing none? Again, we'll take a roll call vote, Peter?
Heather, yes.
Okay, Chris?
Abstain.
Okay, Heather?
Yes.
Jeff, yes, Katie?
Yes, I vote for Heather.
Thank you.
Congratulations everyone.
That was brutal.
Before we move on, I had something I had just put together since it was the end of the last year together, and tonight we're officially beginning of the next year that we're facing. So I wanted to say a few things regards to you guys for the board, also for the record, so if you would just allow me a few minutes, I would appreciate it. And so, again. First of all, I want to thank the board for their support this past year, giving me the opportunity. Also, to continue to serve as your chair. I also want to thank the board for another year of your commitment, your tireless dedication to continue to serve and strive to make Hubbardston safe and healthy for all of its citizens. Facing the challenges and the limited resources that we have is difficult enough for anyone, but we are fortunate to have, in my opinion, very dedicated citizens like yourselves who are passionate and who love their town very much. All of this that you do does not go unnoticed or unappreciated by those of us who work with you, myself, the town administrator, the staff, and all who've served this town of ours, not the least being the Hubbardston citizens. On what personal note, with all the years that I've served the select board, I want to point out what I consider the amazing chemistry that I feel that we have with this board, allowing us to function. Those of you who have been on for a while, and those of you who have served as town administrators and so forth, or just have just attended meetings, you don't always have that kind of chemistry within select boards. And we are, in my opinion, very fortunate, and allows us to function. We have five very different individuals with different backgrounds, different occupations, different ways of looking at things. Each one of us has our own passions, our own beliefs and desires as to what's ahead for Hubbardston. Chemistry shows at our meetings with strong, passionate arguments for and against issues that come up. We may strongly disagree with each other, and we passionately argue for what we, each of us, want on a given issue being discussed. But this is as it should be in a representative form of government. Each of us has a right to his or her own opinion and to be heard. And I'm happy to say all of this happens at our meetings because of the respect, and I emphasize that, that each of us has for each other. When we adjourn, we generally leave wishing each other a good night, drive safely, see you soon, and how's the family? Hubbardston is fortunate, excuse me, to have such a group of individuals working for the betterment of our town. So again, I want to thank you all for your service, and let's have the best possible year ahead of us that we possibly can. Thank you.
Nicely said, Jeff.
And, and, so, with that, anyone here for open session? I don't see anyone, so.
Bella, did you have anything for open session?
Yes, Bella does.
You need to unmute yourself.
He's muted. There you go.
Nothing's coming through.
Drew.
Oh, there we go.
Hi Bella, we can hear you now, I think.
Yay! I have joyous news, which is why I'm wearing the hat, because it's a wool hat and uncomfortably hot in this temperature. But, I have, you will recall that our unit petitioned you for a proclamation declaring the Hubbardston Colonial Militia, the Hubbardston Militia Company, to be the official Hubbardston unit of Revolutionary War reenactors. And this was part of a process for which we would apply to the office of the Adjutant General of the Massachusetts National Guard for authorization to drill a parade under arms in the state of Massachusetts in accordance with NGL one thirty dash dash whatever, whatever. And I am very happy and proud to report that I have indeed heard back from the Massachusetts National Guard granting the Hubbardston Militia Company authorization under the laws of the state of Massachusetts to continue to do what we do. And I thank you for your kindness and cooperation. And I will submit a copy of this letter to you for inclusion in town records. Now that we are officially authorized, many reenactor groups are not, I intend to try to do some more recruiting and to build the unit for the Sasquatch Centennial, where I hope that we can give many people access to our reenactor's perspective on, on history, the great history of our nation. And I thank you again, and we're authorized. Yay! Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
With that being complete and it being open session, with there being no action item during the tabled item on host community agreements, if you see it fit, I think now would be an appropriate time to offer the owners of Paper Crane an opportunity to, to speak.
Sure.
As they are visiting us. And I'm assuming it's on the host community agreement?
Of course.
Would you like to come up over here? Want to come up and join us at the table?
Sure, yeah, thanks.
Here, leave that there. You can come over here.
Oh, okay.
It is your husband, not mine.
All right. Oh, thanks.
Oh, lost my shoe, just like Trump.
Did he lose his shoe?
Probably.
Okay.
He didn't lose the meat. Took him right off his feet.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for having us. So, we're the owners of Paper Crane Cannabis. We have a host community agreement that has yet to expire. So you might be wondering why we're hoping to receive a new HCA. And that's because per the CCC's regulations and per new legislation, or new-ish, I guess it was, it's now been almost two years in November that it was passed. Our HCA, the terms of our contract, don't comply with the CCC's regulations. This spring, we were required, as we are required to do so annually, to renew our license. And because our current HCA doesn't comply with both the legislation and the CCC's regulations, we're not able to renew our license, which makes us unable to operate. And it's just really that simple. So we're just asking for a revised contract that complies with a very simple, you know, sort of outline that the HCA has provided in their model host community agreement.
The CCC's provided.
That the CCC has provided in their model HCA. And so I'm happy to go over what that would mean, and I think you have that information, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was a great summary. It is, it's kind of, it's tough because we've been, we're, I'm just glad we can finally get this going. I mean, there's, there's, I think, a really easy way to put a new one together with, with the guidelines, so.
Yeah, they have tried to make it as straightforward as possible in terms of, well, with the guidelines, you know, there are, you know, some simple guidelines of what. The CCC is a mess. Oh, that I agree with. Well, for sure, yeah, I mean, so, because, you know, there was like this hard stop, you know, the, as of March first, you know, if you don't have the HCA that complies, you know, with their new rules, then you can't renew your license. Our application for renewal is like mid-March, and it's like, well, we really haven't had a lot of time to try to have this conversation, so they at least did grant us an extension, but that extension expires in September.
Are you kidding me?
Which I'm sure we could obviously try and get another one.
I, I hope, I hope so.
I mean, they're twenty positions short on the CCC right now. They need twenty more bodies to make it function somewhat quasi-normal.
Yeah.
Which has, has not been normal for two years.
Oh, yeah, they're always supposed to.
I don't know how they can get anything done.
Agreed.
So, as you're aware, the board has been looking into things. And the decision on the host community agreements has very little to do with the businesses that are actually here in town, but has to do with the rights of the board. And where the laws lie of, yes, the original contract said this, and the law said this, but now that's unfair. We have recently received word that there was legislation, not legislation, that there was a legal dispute between the city of Havrell and the Cannabis Control Commission that did, at least at a very low level, end up falling in the municipality's favor. So a lot of things like that will have the board looking into what is best for the community versus what is best for businesses, which is something we do actively consider every time we talk about this. I'm hoping that we can get to the end of this within the next meeting or two, but that's where the holdup is. I can speak for the town in that we appreciate your business and want to see you succeed, but there is a lot of legal red tape involved in this, whereas what the voters of the community approves to come in and what is happening right now are completely different things, and that is of no fault of yours.
Right.
So we don't want you to think that we're dragging our feet, because we're not. We're just trying to make sure that everything for the town and for businesses within the community are going to be proper moving forward. Because we would hate to sign away any sort of ability to make a profit and then have it turn around several years from now and be like, oh, if we just would have held, it would have all worked out. And I understand that, you guys have been awesome to work with. I apologize, I don't have more to say. When you reach out, I feel bad, but we are working our way through the process. Please keep the board updated on your waiver status. It is good to know that September is when your waiver currently is going to expire.
Extension, yeah.
Can you reapply for another extension?
Um.
We will, we will obviously try.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think anybody has yet, you know, because.
Hasn't, haven't tried to double extension?
Yeah, because, like, that cutoff was March first, and I'm sure that we happened to be one of the first licensees to.
Yeah.
Because our application, you know, renewal was like mid-March.
The CCC, after seeing that case out of Havrell, should probably take a step back and think about what they're doing too. You know what I mean? So they gotta wait for that to go to probably appeals court.
Oh, Steve, that's, Caroline's gonna go, they're gonna go back and forth now and that, yeah, for sure.
We have, I'm, we, so the owners of STEM, that's the dispensary in Havrell.
Yeah.
They're one of our, like, top retail partners, they carry our products. And so I'm familiar with that business and their case. And where we differ, you know, from them is that they're trying to get money back from the town. They're trying to go back and collect money that they've already paid to the town. We're, we're just trying to make sure that our HCA, from the time, you know, that the legislation was, you know, put forth and, and when, you know, the CCC included this, you know, these new changes to the HCA's in the regulations, just going forward, so like, starting now going forward. We're not trying to like, do anything retroactively, which is what Havrell was trying to do. They were saying, hey, we paid all of this money, you know, there was no, you know, sort of, like, there were no costs reasonably related to the money that we paid to you. And the other dispensaries in Havrell didn't pay that money, which is why they're saying, why should we have to do this when the other, you know, dispensaries have it? So there are big differences between what we're, we're just trying to be compliant from, you know, now going forward, so that we can renew our license and operate, we can leave the past to the past.
Because also with the changes, some of the changes that came down from Austin, there's a potential class action suit.
Potentially, there's nothing on the table quite yet.
Right, that, that several towns are considering. So, I mean, as, as, to quote, it is still a mess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would think this case out of Havrell, the CCC and their dysfunction, I don't know how anything can move forward. Do you follow me?
Yes.
Because of their inability to get things done, I don't know how they get it done. I don't know if they're paying the dot in their i's and crossing their t's, but I don't know how they can, we're twenty bodies short, I don't know what positions they are.
Let's just say when inventory needs clearance from the CCC.
Yeah.
You, 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 you put it away thinking, knowing it will probably be away for a long time while you're waiting for any kind of clearance, months and months and months. Oh my gosh, some, many months. Yeah.
How does that allow you to function?
It's tough, it's, no, no, it's tough, yeah, like, it's, it's.
So you can't wholesale your product without?
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying, sometimes if there's maybe a dispute with like, a very, something very simple, just like an inventory tag or, or one of your transfer tags or something like that, whatever is associated with that package, if something is not right, it immediately will like, lock it up. It'll basically lock it out so it can't travel within the, the tracking system.
So that one package is doomed for, until it's worn away.
Until your, your assigned investigator basically chimes in and like, it's always like, whenever, I mean, it's only happened a couple of times, but it's always an inventory thing, but they're just very hard to get in touch with, so. It's, it is, it's a challenge.
They're just short staffed, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, understandable with the dysfunction going on, yeah, so.
Yeah.
And it just gets worse, it seems, every month, as you're like, more?
Yeah, so circus over there.
So unfortunately, there's nothing we're going to be able to tell you that you really want to hear tonight, but with approval from the chair, I will do my best to expedite this process and see what we can do in the coming meetings to come to a conclusion on the select board side. If that does not line up with the needs of the, of the business at this time, we'll have to figure something out and we'll call you in, but I will ensure that we take the tabled item and actually discuss it in the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
There's so many variables right now.
I know, I understand. And you, you do have all the information from the CCC, like, their new guidelines, the model host.
Well, one of our meetings, we had a presentation.
Okay.
It was, it was almost overkill because of the amount of detail and this.
Yeah, I know our lawyer.
Trying to figure out what they just said.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, just, I just want to make sure that you understand what we're asking for, and it's just so that, you know, we're kind of, you know, just covering our end and being compliant with the regulations that are imposed upon us.
No, and we are doing due diligence. The presentation in the executive session that he was talking about right there was well over a thousand dollars. Like, the town is invested in figuring out what needs to happen from here. And we are interested in supporting the businesses, but we can't do so at our own.
Course.
Issue.
Yep, okay.
Like you, we have to protect ourselves, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so, we're happy, you're happy. Yeah, we like having you here, so.
Thank you, we like being here.
Oh, yeah.
We want to stay here, so hopefully we can create something else.
Sorry, I couldn't be here also, he's, he's, would love to talk about this. He had a medical appointment that he could not change, so, that is unfortunate.
It is unfortunate, but just, you know, let us know if there are any next steps that, you know, we can do to kind of help this process along. And, yeah, we'll just look out for some more information. Yeah, next meeting. Okay, we won't take up any more of your time, thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
I, I would just, I would like to commend you on, you know, the, what are problems you had a year or two ago? It's no longer.
Thank you.
You know what I mean? And it didn't bother me two years ago, but now it's like, you don't smell anything, so.
Thank you.
Good job, good job.
Well, yeah, it's, it's still early season, but.
I didn't really smell it.
I'm trying, yeah.
I mean, you fixed it last year, right?
Yeah, we certainly did, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't smell it, so.
The plan that we had laid out, the spacing and the timing, it, it seemed to work, so we're sticking to that, thank you.
Right. Thank you. And Torres, anytime, just, we're there.
Thank you.
Monday through Saturday.
Right.
Did you know?
No, I didn't, I just figured they didn't want us to through the.
Through everything. No, no, because I know we're going to take it up, so. Okay, fact being said, we'll move back to our original, so Katie, communications and announcements.
All right, so this coming up Wednesday at the library, we have the Hidden Meadow Storytime at the library at ten AM. Nothing on Saturday, yeah, they're sorry.
I thought there is, there is.
Oh, there is, okay. It wasn't on the calendar.
It was an addition because of the barbecue, I wanted to make sure we all could go to the barbecue, so I decided to.
Okay, so there is a story time this Saturday?
I already told my child.
Okay.
We're building fairy.
What time is it on this Saturday?
Ten AM, we're building fairy houses.
Building fairy houses, ten AM at the library, on Saturday, people, okay? And then there is, oh, you're gonna be there? No? You don't want to go build a fairy? Come on, it's good stuff.
We don't have any fairies.
Well, maybe in your garden.
I could use a fairy.
No way to lift, you'll build a house, you don't have a fairy.
I know, how are you supposed to?
I could use one in the garden.
So, anyway, moving along. There's gonna be a stamped dedication as well at the Hubbardston Library on July twenty-fourth at ten AM. And then, on July twenty-sixth, there's Dungeons and Dragons at six PM at the library. Yay, the library's on a roll. Okay, then we have nobody's favorite to hear, taxes are due August first, sorry, but the town has to function. So make sure you pay your bill. And then we have fun things in August. We have, oh, we still have one summer concert, sorry, in July, don't let me skip that. On July twenty-seventh and then August tenth, we have our next two concert series, the la, the second two, five to eight at the Rec Field. We had our first one this past weekend, and we did have to pull the rain date on that, even though the weatherman was wrong, but we did it anyway. And there was a bunch of food trucks and ice cream and stuff like that that came out, and there was a bunch of people that came out, it was good. So we're gonna be doing it again on July twenty-seventh and August tenth, from five to eight at the Rec Field. We have the big random playing on July twenty-seventh and August tenth is ASB. And then we have the dingy dash on August twenty-fourth at ten AM, so start building your boats. Entries are due August twen, uh, August nineteenth.
They're all ready.
Yeah, I know, isn't it? Like, it's already like, shh, that's the end.
It's getting darker already.
It's a little one, though.
Oh, gosh, a couple days ago.
Like, you might be able to fit it. Yeah, football, don't worry.
Some ago.
Yeah, so start building your boats, get your duct tape, because again, August twenty-fourth, ten AM. And that just brings us through the summer for a little bit of fun and good stuff, and that's all I got for right now.
Then it snows.
Yeah, no, it does not snow, we have, we have lots of fall things, we're just, let's focus on summer.
And I would like to mention, for the benefit of the rest of the board, and thank Katie and Peter for the staff appreciation barbecue yesterday that was well attended, and they appreciated.
Katie, awesome spread.
And wish to thank the select board, and I want to publicly thank you.
Nothing was burnt?
For the effort and everything else, so.
He is very good for making spreads. Rob, it was a hit.
Everything's a hit, that's, it's a barbecue, it was good stuff. And I'm glad everybody had a good time at the, for the employees, we appreciate it. That's what the whole point is.
Okay, moving on, we have a pretty lengthy consent agenda, so I'll go through it. So if you can hold your holds, if you will, or any questions until after I've gone through everything, and then we'll go back over whichever, whatever you want to look. First of all, the resignations. John Tetral, member of the Economic Development Committee, effective seven-eight, twenty-twenty-four. Regina Tetral, member, Economic Development Committee, seven-eight, twenty-four. Appointments, excuse me. Christine Kissel, trustee, Library Board of Trustees, at the.
Annual Town Election.
Town Election, yeah, twenty-twenty-five. Rosemary Southwick, member of Finance Committee, again, annual town election, twenty-twenty-five. Kevin Lamarche, member, Board of Health, again, the annual town election, twenty-twenty-five. Christopher Pernier, Commissioner, Conservation Commission, six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Peter Russell, member of Planning Board, expires six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Town Administrator Nathan Boudreau, Representative for the Mark Advisory Board, expires six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. We have appointments and wage authorizations. Patricia Lowe, Executive Assistant, Executive Department, twenty-two ninety-two. Wage, new position, expires six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Patricia Lowe, interim Land Use Tooties, Planning Department, twenty-four oh-one, interim wage.
For the good of the order, Mr. Chair, she's getting paid the twenty-four oh-one, not forty-five and some change.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Not adding the two.
Not, 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 issue two.
Yeah, okay, I'm like, where do you see forty-five?
Are you sure?
Yeah, I know, she's like, sign me up!
Add them up.
Yep, again, interim wage, six, expires six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Sarah Rich. Sarah Rich, Assistant Treasure Collector, Finance Department, twenty three fifty four, a new hire. Uh, expires six thirty twenty twenty five, and she's coming on board as of the twenty twenty ninth. She'll be in the in the office. So are there any questions or holds on any of the consent agenda?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Patricia Low um is going to have two positions?
She's going to keep some of the interim land use duties while we figure that position out.
Are these two full-time positions?
She can only work forty hours. Patricia is doing, is doing this a favor by keeping the land use boat afloat while starting her position with the select board and town administrator.
So it's one forty hour position being paid twenty four dollars and one cent an hour.
Yep.
And compensating both those duties.
So we're saving money.
In section C.
And I'm hoping to talk to Chair Monroe tomorrow and either post the position of land use clerk or begin a much more serious conversation with consultants about a potential planner. We, the reason we're kind of dragging our feet on this is because there were a few options to potentially get a land use clerk that made a little less and worked a little less hours and a regional planner with some other communities. But those options then fell through, so the land use clerk position could be posted as early as tomorrow.
So Tricia's position, is it, so she's getting twenty, sorry, I typed, are you, were you with there?
Yeah, let's just pretend you're not.
Twenty, twenty four oh one's the rate?
Yes.
So it's usually a split position with the two pays?
Yeah.
So what's your plan when the interim planning goes away, you going back to the twenty two?
That's what I have to talk to your. Yes, in the letter, you'll see it goes back to the twenty two ninety two.
Okay, are they similar duty positions?
Very.
Should they directly be scored the same in the wage to compensation scale then?
They are.
What am I missing?
Then why is one twenty four oh one and one twenty two ninety?
Because I treated the interim duty as a step up for just the interim time because it is a additional and extra amount of work. So I went to the F scale instead of the E, just for that time being, for the what I hope is less than sixty days.
Okay, so regardless of what office she's in, she's getting a twenty four oh one until you do something with that position.
While.
She goes back to twenty two ninety?
While she's doing both, while she's juggling both offices, she's making twenty four oh one.
Same amount of hours?
She can work up to forty hours.
Okay, what happens when that goes away?
She goes back to twenty two ninety two.
Now, how many hours?
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
How many were?
Twenty six.
Twenty six.
I mean, you still do storytime too, right? What's the hourly rate on the storytime?
Fifteen and some change.
Five hundred dollars. No, just kidding.
What's the normal planning rate for for?
Uh, it is, uh, normal planning rate is twenty, I get what, twenty one, twenty two forty seven.
So and right now before the interim, Patricia's getting twenty two ninety two.
Mm-hmm.
Before we add on planning and exec.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then after it goes away, she'll go back to twenty two ninety two. Just I felt it was appropriate that with her willingness to take on additional duties to compensate.
It's a lot of work. It's forty hours.
Absolutely, yeah.
The planning, the officer is.
So when does this, when does this start?
She's already started.
Already started.
She's.
Okay. So Patricia Low's getting twenty four oh one, sitting here today as we currently speak for forty hours until the interim land use duties go away. And then you go down to, what did you say, twenty six days?
Twenty two ninety two.
Just technically a hundred day off right now.
Twenty six hours, twenty six.
Twenty six hours.
Anything else from anyone over Chris outside?
So the land use is normally fourteen hours?
It's um.
Sixteen to eighteen.
Sixteen eighteen?
It depends on what ti- it really actually depends on what time of the year it is.
Okay, and there was a little bit of wiggle room in that salary line because if you remember, right before the former land use clerk left.
I can't, I I can't help it, I'm trying to hide it with my hair.
Contrary, we created a part-time planner role for the previous, and it, that was a little higher. So there is some wiggle room in that line that we were able to save some in FY twenty four and have available in FY twenty five.
And this twenty two ninety two is FY twenty four's number, but with a um, an increase for FY twenty five?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think I hear you saying there's no impact to the overall budget.
No. From when we hired Patricia as the land use clerk, there has been a surplus in that account. That's where we were able to pay her to do the above and beyond things like the civics academy and the storytime during town meeting. I kind of chipped a little bit away at that to bring on the extra hours.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, and we are going to start advertising.
Any other holds or questions?
Just make sure that everything is dead.
Yeah. Okay, no, I'm good.
I didn't hear that last question.
Oh, I said the, that I asked to double check if they were gonna start advertising, but he's gonna say, he said he was gonna check with Chris first to make sure that everything would go.
For the land use.
I want to make sure our dreams of having a shared planner or consultant are dead, and then.
We'll bury those and we'll move on.
Because the, and you can ask Patricia directly, the land use clerk position, if done right, is incredibly hands-on because there's a lot of red tape and planning. There's a lot of timelines, a lot of timeframes, a lot of random applicable mass general law that you can't really train for. So it's.
Learn as you go.
It's certainly learn as you go, and she did do a wonderful job learning.
Okay, once again, are there any more holds? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the Senate agenda as presented?
Some moves.
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right, yes.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carried. Um, moving on to the new business. Um, do you have some budget transfers? Nate, turn it over to you.
Yeah, so you'll see in front of you that there is a new version of the budget transfers. Once the finalized AP and payroll were put in and I knew the finalized numbers, we were able to do a majority of the transfers internally within departments. The only external uh transfers remaining are that of the fire department and ambulance. And next year, or this year, that problem will go away because we combined ambulance and fire into fire services at town meeting this year. So they will no longer need to do the the back and forth.
So which one is the ambulance? I mean, it doesn't say just the fire department. I know it's a different account number, but which one is the ambulance, which one's the fire?
You got one, a hundred dollars, six hundred and fifty dollars, and eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
Two of them say larger than predicted pharmacy order to ambulances, that's a hundred and the six fifty. And then you have the eight fifty that says larger um than predicted June ambulance billing fee. But they all, no, this one has a different account number. These ones have the same account number, so the six fifty and um.
Is ambulance.
Yeah. Yeah, they have the same, the hundred and the six fifty have the same.
The seven fifty total for the ambulance.
Oh, no, wait, the bottom com- numbers are different, sorry. I like.
So all three are for the ambulance.
So three, three of them are from fire to ambulance or from ambulance to fire.
Okay.
Two of them are from the select board legal line into fire services because the accounts have gone over and we want to close out the year. There is a chance that when Troy gets back, who runs the books on their side, that that ends up being unnecessary.
Okay.
But seeing as there is not a select board meeting for two weeks, Kelly and I wanted to get the paperwork moving in the event he does need to go through. Even if the transfer did go through, the money would still trickle into free cash.
Okay.
Is this a normal occurrence every year?
Usually there's more.
More than this?
Yeah. I think last year was nineteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, shifting stuff to make everything.
We've been, we've been very transparent in keeping, keeping everything as affordable as possible, so.
No, I hear you. I'm just curious, this overrun's kind of irritating me, so.
Well, I think in Nate's cover letter, it said that ambulance supplies and services exceeded the budgeted amount due to higher than predicted call volumes.
Yeah.
So it's a higher number.
You're gonna have more expense.
So more revenue is generated, but you have to match that.
Yeah.
So, help me understand what pharmacy order is, what's that, supplies, stocking the ambulance and stuff?
Meds.
Dermatic meds.
Needles. Any other questions on this?
Have more of a Troy's on vacation, but he.
What's the billing fee? What's the billing fee?
Usually it's like with Coastal or some billing company, so we don't, most towns don't do their own collections. They send it out to a third party, third party fills up with all the billing or to the insurance companies and maybe does the collections.
You mean for the, like, if, does the ambulance has a run?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So why is there?
You take a ride, you bill it.
Why is there?
Because the same reason that there's.
Than predicted June ambulance billing fee.
Because we have more calls.
More anticipated. So we don't pay on 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 call, like we don't pay per call.
I'd have to get that answer for you.
We do, we do pay per what they do. It's usually by volume. It's not a flat.
In noting that, nope, that June would not matter, but the sniping program has, and we're gonna have an update on it in in September, it has started off incredibly successfully. The, I think he said he had one or two ships left empty in July versus almost twenty the month before.
There's gonna be more than that soon, though. Right?
We'll hire.
Any other questions cons- on this particular item?
Yeah, well, let's talk about the other two. We've got negative balances in two accounts, so we're transferring money from, what account are we transferring from?
The select board services, which is the, the lion's share of that account is the legal funding, which we were very low on this year. I think we, but it already spent about half.
So the accounting department needs these funds to pay the legal bills?
No, it's, it's opposite. We had extra legal money, so we are straightening out the fire and ambulance account. And if unnecessary, when the, is he captain?
Troy?
Uh, yeah.
When the captain returns from his vacation, we're going to have a discussion with him about what is needed. There's a chance that that whole five thousand dollars is unnecessary, but we did not want to bother him on his vacation in Maine. Oh, I wouldn't bother him. But then again, I went to school with him, so I could do that.
Why is the coming, why is the request coming from the accounting department and not the fire department?
That's what's confusing me.
Because we put it together today.
Okay.
Oh, you couldn't get their signature?
Yeah.
Just checking.
I think in general, next time I would just write fire department and just write that you signed on their behalf.
That could have worked too, just did not want to.
Well, that would be more um straightforward, I think. Be less confusing.
Yeah. Turns out Chief Hayes stopped by shortly after anyway, so I could have, could have put it together. But in the name of getting it done, I knew what I could sign off on.
So did that have to police the select board's slush fund there?
No, sir.
What do we got left in there?
Well, it's zero. It doesn't matter.
It's gotta be zero anyways, cause we're in a new fiscal year.
It'll zero out to free cash.
So it goes from there, free cash?
Yeah, I wanna say it probably fifteen thousand. It was close to twenty thousand.
One, two, three.
Your own computers.
One, two, three, four, five.
You just missed it by a day. We couldn't have.
You missed it by a day, cause you've known about this.
Nate, I know we do so few of these, but next year at the end of the year, can we just also, instead of just writing transfer to the account number, which I know is all the accounting needs, but for those of us who don't have the accounts memorized, you just throw that on.
My key has the accounts memorized.
I think it's memorized for the most part. I have a, I have a sheet.
Yeah, that's a, that's not memorized, that's a sheet.
All right, anything else? All right, and then I could need a motion to approve the FY twenty four budget transfers totaling five thousand four hundred ninety three dollars and eighty two cents as detailed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and second. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes, yes.
Opposed? Stained? Motion's carried. Moving on, uh, Mass Trails Grant Program. Nate, have you any say on that?
Mass Trails, this is the grant that Open Space came in a few months ago and presented to you, which you allowed them to apply for. I would like to thank the Open Space Committee, especially Mark Kreske, who really went above and beyond on this. It's going to be two wonderful projects, one, a rail, a crossing at a path on Malone Road, and the other, a ADA accessible trail. It will be great. We are setting.
Williamsville Road.
Yes, on Williamsville Road. Yeah, I think I'm.
Sorry, yeah, you did, you missed them up.
What did you say the first one was?
A crossing light that will go off with movement because the trail crosses Williamsville Road.
So like the crosswalk signs down here?
Yep.
The flashers.
Cause you don't know what's there.
Be a light on Williamsville Road that goes off if someone's crossing the trail that goes across the road.
A flasher. Yep.
It's like what you see on like Western Mass.
So it flashes all the time?
No, it does not flash all the time.
Push the button?
It flashes when there is someone walking by.
Motion.
Or a deer or.
Yeah, porcupine.
So animal lights flashing when a deer walks around.
Yeah.
Or a bird flies by.
It'll be good.
Bad. Just like squirrel.
So I'm assuming they're like the ones at the cape on the rail trails?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, yeah, they don't, you've got a, like, something big has to go in front of it. A deer could set it off. A deer could.
You would want the deer to set it off, cause they.
Yeah, I would be, yes. Yeah, I would much rather have flashing lights.
They use that trail like they ever.
A deer or a moose.
Yeah, or a moose or a bear, anything large.
The light and shoot a deer.
I'm good.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stoll, five Longwood Road. I'm on the Open Space Committee. So if you have questions about this, I might be able to answer some of them. But usually you can take the sensor and focus it, so every time something just wanders around, won't necessarily set it off. It's trained on the trail. Thank you.
So there's two sensors.
Each direction.
Heading towards the trails.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Again, I will be happy if a deer sets it off, cause that's my side hit, you know?
Is this a fineable offense if you go through when the lights are flashing?
Only if you hit them.
The person, not the deer.
Let me get back to you on that. My heart says yes, but.
If it's, well, if it's a painted crosswalk, then like crosswalks are like, I think it's like four hundred dollars if you don't stop. But again, there'd have to be a cop sitting there at the same time, because, yeah, but nobody wants to run somebody over.
Probably, it all depends on what they put for a sign on the flashing light you're riding.
Corner, if you coming around from Burnshire to Williamsville going to Barry, it's a quick curve that you.
Crosses?
Yeah, so.
It crosses, I thought it went across Williamsville.
That is Williamsville.
Oh, and it goes to the left? So where is it?
Yeah, there's like a rail trail.
Oh, I know, I never.
That, an old, an old railroad um that goes across the street right there.
Yeah.
One side you can see.
Okay.
The other side you can't when you're coming around that corner.
Blind.
But you still see the lights on the other side flashing.
Yeah.
So at least it would give you a heads up that somebody's trying to cross.
Has anybody got mowed down down that?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean it won't happen.
Right, but I, less chance with the light.
And with everyone trying to connect everything, there's more.
There's a lot of connections going on.
People, yeah, there'll be more people walking in, yeah.
And this is, the contract that I'm seeking authorization for this evening is just that project. The ADA project will come at a later time.
From Malone?
Yes.
So the hundred and seven is just for the lights?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, it's like.
Like, that's a lot!
Well, we're accepting the whole grant.
I think it's like forty grand.
Okay.
You're authorizing me to sign the, for the lights.
For the lights. Okay.
It's somewhere I saw forty grand or something.
Yeah, it's.
Forty-two-five.
It's in the backup documents.
Yeah.
I could share with you all a lighter, for a lighter moment to this, to the point that you're discussing, where we can say that truth is stranger than fiction, there's no way you can make this stuff up. True story, this happened in one of the Dakotas, north or south, I don't remember, but a woman called a radio station, a talk show, and she was very upset because in the area of her house, where the, the deers kept crossing, et cetera, and it was driving her crazy, and she was frustrated. She wanted the town to do something about it. And she said, can't you move the sign?
Yes, I, I heard that one.
She actually said that, can't you move the sign?
So they'll cross somewhere else. It was, no, it was, it was rough.
Yeah.
I'm like, what?
They don't get out too often in the Dakotas.
Apparently. It's like somebody.
Unbelievable. So if there anything else on this, if not, can we, would you like to make a motion?
I could, I just have one quick, yeah, I can absolutely do it. I just have one quick question. Nate, was this the grant that we use the ARPA matching grants for?
Yes.
Okay, so this one oh seven five hundred doesn't include the matching grants that we put towards it?
It does not.
Okay.
There are certain parts that we do need to put in the ARPA, and then the select board approved the, I'm gonna use the very professional word of fronting eighty-five thousand dollars next year for three months period, so that.
For the reimbursement aspect.
For the reimbursement, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
And Mary has done the math, and it's looking like we're going to be able to do that successfully.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollar Mass Trails Grant and authorize the town administrator to sign the grant agreement for the first phase of twenty-one thousand for the Weir River Rail Trail Crossing Safety Improvements.
Motion made, just for a second.
Second.
And second. Any discussion or further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One more time, thank you, Mark and the Open Space Committee, they really went out of their way here and it's awesome.
Free money is good.
Okay, moving on.
It's never free.
Nothing's free.
I know, it's never free.
Uh, turn this over to Nate, Nate, you actually permit for the Gardner Road?
So I respectfully ask that we stay on the topic of the auction permit as presented. We received an auction permit from Water Real Realty to host an auction on the sale of forty-eight Gardner Road, Hoverson, Massachusetts. I would like to suggest that we, that you approve the auction permit contingent upon the gentleman from the real estate company, Paul Varney, getting me a new insurance certificate, as the insurance certificate expired on June thirty, and contingent upon the company letting us know when they were having the auction, when it is scheduled. He, other than that, he has paid the fee, met all applicable things that he needs to do, and also applied for a solicitor's license with the police chief.
Except for insurance.
He gave an insurance when he put it in.
It's, yeah, but it's gonna be null and void on the thirtieth.
On the fourteenth of July.
Oh, fourteenth of July.
Yeah.
It's already expired.
Oh, it is. Oh, yeah, fourteenth.
When it was put in three.
That's yesterday. But so it's not a complete application without that certificate.
It was current.
That's why we're doing the contingency, because it was complete when submitted, but it was submitted almost a month ago.
Okay. Okay.
So they gotta redo it.
So he's gonna produce a new one? Have you been in contact?
Yes. Yeah, I talked to him yesterday.
All right, yeah, I have no problem with that.
Just one question on the application, so is that the standard application we use for any licenses for anything?
And, and it's something that I'm looking, it's something that I'm looking into.
Okay, so.
A hundred, a hundred percent.
I'm assuming where the building commissioner did not sign, he would not normally sign on an optioneer's permit, it's simply just the standard cheater paper that he uses.
Yeah, yeah.
The fire chief also thought it was a little bit ridiculous that it was easy to sign on an outdoor auction, but.
Well, that's the same one for me to pull for, well, not me, but for the Hoverson Fair, for Moon Hill to come and do the one day tour, it's the same application.
Really? That's for all licenses in the town?
Yes.
We're looking at some insurance, that's it. It's not one.
Yeah, they, yeah, they.
Yeah, it should be separate.
There's a lot of.
And it should be a different fee for everything.
It's all it should be.
Just.
It should be.
There is.
There's never a fee.
The fee is, yep, the fee schedule is online.
The fee's different, but it's the same application, so it gets very confusing on who has to sign what for what, yeah.
The fee is different.
The damn fee should be relevant.
Yeah. Opportunity for change.
This is something we're looking into, because it is into best practice.
Yeah, that's why I highlight what actually has to be filled out.
Yeah, we need to bring it up for the time today.
Hand it to the person, because it's like too confusing.
It's convenient for.
What, having one? It certainly is, but it's also easier to have the right people sign the form, if you would, well, you know what I mean?
And it's incredibly confusing for those filling it out.
Yeah.
Like, I get more calls on, on, we are going to.
Well, why can't we make it easier?
Yeah, don't worry.
It just takes someone.
What is the public auction fee?
Thirty-five bucks?
That's it?
Yeah.
It should need to be like two hundred.
No, you can't, because then no one will ever have one. It's not worth it.
Not true. I don't believe it.
I don't think most people that have them fill out paperwork anyhow.
They'll have them, they just will. Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-five bucks? That's kinda cheap, though.
I think they're reviewing all of their scheduled fees right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I make a motion to accept the auction permit.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, it's gotta be right, certain, in a certain way. Um, I move to conditionally approve the auction permit for Water Real, Water, I can't say it either, Water Wheel Realty at forty-eight Gardner Road, pending receipt of an updated certificate of liability insurance and confirmation of an auction date.
Second.
There we go.
Okay, motion made and second. Further discussion, yes?
Is there a minimum liability amount that has to be on that?
One million dollars.
Thank you very much.
Did you mention the twenty-one thousand?
I feel better already.
No, I read this one.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we're not doing that.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, um, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yay.
Uh, I'd like to, all business, we've already handled the host community agreement, uh, so now we'll move to the select board meeting schedule.
Getting to the night.
We all have copies of, yeah.
We do. Well, we'll, we'll find it. I didn't, I don't have a copy in here. There's no copy. We have it on mine, you know?
Yeah, it was on mine.
Yeah, it's all the way down the bottom.
All the way down the bottom, I know.
Unless there are changes that any of you need to make.
No.
I don't think there would be.
At this particular point in time, we're just looking to approve the schedule as presented.
August fifth. August fifth doesn't work for me.
Like the one in two weeks, the next meeting?
Yeah. My wife's on vacation, that means I'm on vacation.
Are you sure you're not just assuming that?
No, she's on vacation.
Mr. Chair and members, would you entertain?
They can't go to Tuesday, because I'm on vacation.
Yeah, so you're sure.
So I won't be in a meeting then, or?
Well, he'll be on vacation the whole week, so.
Yeah, I'll be in Maine, but I'll probably chime in if I could.
Okay, so we can keep the schedule?
There you go.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, yeah.
Okay.
Just assume chances, get to see people, so.
Any other conflicts or changes that anyone?
September third, I'm assuming that's, yeah, Labor Day, second.
Yeah.
I want your appreciation.
No other changes or any questions? Seeing that, could we get a motion to approve the twenty, twenty twenty-five select board meeting schedule as presented?
Same.
Motion made and second.
Second.
Sorry, I was thinking about what it was.
Any further discussion?
Thought for my own.
Negative.
Seeing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed? Motion carried. Move to the TA report. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
So there is a full version of this available on the town website as usual, but I brought a Spark Notes version for you this evening. A cooling center has been activated in the Slade Building, this room and the senior center, today during business hours and tomorrow during business hours. If we're being completely honest, we wouldn't stop anyone any day from coming in here and getting some reprieve from whatever is going on outside, but during these extreme weather times, we put it out there just so people remember. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four was successfully closed out. I'd like to thank the financial team of Mary, Kelly, and myself for doing all of that. The department heads all worked very hard this year to make sure that their budget lines did not go over, and they were going to save, except for that. And I, that, that they were not, that they were not gonna save, that they were going to save as much as humanly possible. I'd like to thank the select board for having the annual appreciation barbecue yesterday. It was a wonderful event. Thank you to Katie for arranging and putting together the spread, and Peter for cooking, and the chef for attending, and we do do these every once in a while. It is greatly appreciated. The staff does take note of it, and it increases morale, even if it's just a little bit. I know a burger and some food is the least we can do when these people are working hard all year, but it is good to show appreciation every once in a while for a job well done by all of them.
And it was much cooler under the, uh, Yankee gloves combination, because it just took the sun away.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And it was a little breeze, rolling through. Beautiful.
Within, by the time we're at our next meeting, the FY twenty-four financial report will be released, so we will have a lot more information on where our numbers ended up over the year. I will take a guesstimate on where free cash is going to be landing. With that guesstimate, I will update the forecast and begin the FY twenty-six budget, because there are no days off. Like, but, so we, I've begun putting together that file and rivet. So projects and initiatives, the municipal aggregation program is starting to move now that that legislation has passed to implement a speedier process at the DPU. I will have an update for you guys this fall on that, for those that don't remember.
DPU?
The Department of Public Utility.
Okay, DPU. Okay, sorry.
I'm seeking options for a town planner position. Like, so.
Okay.
We're gonna be talking about that tomorrow. I worked with Rutland through some, through about a month, and this is the second time that that option has fallen through, so I do not think we will be looking into a regionalized planner with Rutland anytime soon. Roadwork is ongoing on Newman Smithster, Brigham, High, North Dogwood North, and a few other locations that are not.
On my truck.
And on Peter's truck. They're.
When they put the liquid down.
I'd like to thank the DPW for their hard work. I'm forming a digital connectivity task force or a committee for better internet use. And those are, I'm seeking applicants for that. It is not a committee established by the select board so that they can meet without the parameters of open meeting law. That is for that grant with the Massachusetts Broadband Institute that we are looking into digital.
So better internet use.
Better internet use.
So if you want better internet use, you contact you.
Yeah.
You hear this, people, listening on the thing?
Well, if you wanna have input on it.
Input on it.
If you just want it, we all do.
Yes, but even still.
And if you want to be the select.
I would represent for the select board.
Jeff? There we go. That is, that is up to, up to the chair.
I'll probably be the last one left on that committee.
So it's just a group to advise you, Nate?
It's a group to advise the consultant.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't know what I'm doing, but.
It's like anybody does, like, we just want better internet.
Yeah, it's terrible.
We're seeking volunteers for various town boards and committees, both on a failure to elect level and a regular appointed level. Those who are interested can find those opportunities on the town website or come see me. We're here all the time, so come by and I'll tell you all about it. Grants in procurement, the long-awaited senior deck is going to be beginning before August first. I, it is signed. Mr. Dayprey came here the other day, says it looks like he's gonna be a few days ahead of August first, which at this point, sure.
How long is it gonna take him?
Three weeks, four weeks?
Three weeks, just in time for autumn.
I agree, six weeks. To be completely complete?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Weather permitting?
There's no stone, there's no stone wall or there's no snow.
Yeah, I'm like.
Weather, weather permitting, and it's certainly weather permitting.
Yeah. Yeah.
He, we, he's hoping to be done by the time the buses come back.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah.
Who's, um, managing this project?
Rob Dayprey, excavating and masonry, and then me on the town side.
He just gets to look out his window. Looks good.
I just opened my door.
And I hope he knows, I'm sure you know, what we're expecting matches what we actually get, right?
I'll periodically stop in. Everyone should periodically stop in. The only change order we anticipate is per code. There may need to be a plug put in out there, so.
A plug? A plug for drainage?
No, and, uh.
Oh, electrical. I'm like, a plug for what? What are we plugging?
No, they're.
Jesus.
So you're the, you're the, you're the DC and we're seeing you on the project for the, on behalf of the town and the seniors now.
There's lots of different things you can do.
Just whenever you call me, make sure you speak up, I'll have escalating going on inside mine to work.
But you're.
Start to pay all of this as well.
It's gonna be good stuff.
The library.
It's gonna be loud.
The library foundation project came in way over expectation, so we're, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we're anticipating around fifty, sixty.
For what now?
The fixing the library foundation, the corner is having an issue, so we're going to be phasing it out. Yes, Mike?
Maybe, uh, the.
No, I asked him a question, because we had a discussion over that.
What is, what is phasing it out?
We're going to, instead of doing the whole project as one RFP, we're going to be play, putting out just that right-hand corner to fix the issue, and.
Side part of it, if it would've been done when the money was given, we probably could've been done to that for at least.
Me and Mr. Robinson are working on the RFP right now.
I know, because every, it just dragged forever and all the costs of the RFP.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. Uh, to Peter's point, um, I did talk to Chris this evening. I was working over there with her on another issue, and that came up, and you mentioned it's foundation work. Could you clarify if that's structural foundation, or is that just the brick veneer?
No, it is my belief that the left, the right-hand side that we will need to fix is structural.
Yeah, because the granite has sunk.
Yeah. A lot of the big project that we had put out originally was brick and that kind of issues.
So it's a hundred and fifteen just to fix that corner?
No, they were gonna do.
The whole thing?
A whole bunch, yeah.
So you're just gonna fix the corner and do piecemeal work?
We're going to put out the.
All right.
A request to have someone fix the corner and give us a price on just the structural integrity portions.
Mike? Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stoll, five Lombard Road. Um, if, if it is structural, did we have a design performed by our structural engineer?
If you stop by during business hours, I'll show you what we're working with for the RFP right now.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Robinson has not gotten back to me yet, so I'm just kind of in a holding pattern. I wrote it, sent it out, waiting.
So the only question I have, they're gonna fix the structure, but are they gonna mitigate the water problem that created that structure problem? That's what I wanna know.
We haven't sent it out yet, so if it's not.
Okay, well, the water has undermined the granite, from what I saw, from what he saw over there in that corner. So, and you can tell it's washed out in the front of the building that's caused damage to the brick, and now it's gotten, and now it runs down the corner right to, and undermining the granite. And it's all the way along that whole wall that's undermined by water. You go and stop, look at some of the stones, you'll see it's just, they're not like they used to be, so.
Or you can go and check the land use office?
Yeah, it's just, so, I, I, I'm just curious if, if they're gonna do a patchwork on that corner to make it look good. Are they gonna take care of the water that's undermining the granite?
Was it like a gutter issue?
Which cracks the bricks.
Is it a gutter issue, like, there's water coming off the roof?
It's, it's a water issue. It's a water issue.
Where's the water coming from?
I don't think there's a gutter there anymore.
Well, that's what I mean, it says off.
What it appears to is it comes off the front of the building.
Yeah.
It's undermining the front.
Okay.
The mortar's cracking on the brick and then the water, I think, runs down along the, uh, brick, drops down to that corner. We know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it's undermining the granite foundation with the bricks setting.
Cause I think they were originally.
Is it having any, uh, effect on the integrity of the structure itself?
The structure as in brick? It's cracking the mortar.
No, the structure that's on the, on the stone.
To, to, well, the wood. Mr. Stahl's point.
Yeah, the wood.
Do we have an authorized, um, you know, evaluation of this problem from a licensed professional?
Short answer, no.
Should we, might wanna get one of those?
That is something we can discuss with the library board of trustees. This is a tougher project to navigate because I'm kind of reporting to.
To entities.
To entities on it.
It's a historical building.
Is it a registered historical building?
It is a registered historical building.
So you can't do anything without their approval?
Yeah, that's, that's why it was put onto the library trustees, the, they went for.
Okay, so they get the approval?
Yeah, they went for a grant, um, from the CPC, like, what, four, five years ago?
Okay.
For, to fix this?
Yeah.
For, and I wanna say it was fifteen hours.
The library trustees have more special article funds than I would like them to have.
Yeah.
And we have had a conversation during their meeting about utilizing some of what they have before seeking more.
Yeah, 'cause the whole thing is, is just kinda stuck there and the price is gonna keep going up to get it repaired, so it's not.
Yeah, it's probably gone up six times since the.
Can we, can we maybe start this whole project with a complete professional understanding of what the scope of the problem is?
Yeah.
Hmm.
They did have somebody go through, um, the whole building.
Okay, that doesn't make me feel all warm and fuzzy. Who is somebody? What did they go through? What are their credentials?
I, I, they went through the whole building. Yeah, you're gonna, they have a report, so I'm not sure if they, how far they dug down in that rabbit hole of the foundation.
Okay. Well, maybe we start by looking at that.
I know they climbed into the attic and their rooms.
But that report now may be at least five years old, right?
No, this was just a recent, they had an engineer go in or somebody, some kind of specialized person go in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. Not the last time. Okay.
Yeah, a authority specialist of some sort.
Yeah, to go through and poke around.
Okay.
So is this something we?
Mike, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, that's okay.
I was just gonna ask, this sounds like we're kinda going down a rabbit hole here. Is this something we should be putting on the next agenda?
Yes.
Certainly.
I don't believe so. It's something that I am working with a member of the library trustees on.
Okay.
I can, I didn't realize there was going to be this much interest in it. I can keep you updated on the library foundation project.
Well, if you're gonna do it, do it right. That's all we're looking at.
Yeah, 'cause reality is it falls under them, not us.
Well, correct, but, and, you know, they want it done right too, so.
Absolutely. Yeah.
We could just have to be an overseer a little bit, I guess.
And the trustees named Mr. Robinson as their liaison to work with me on it.
Yeah, water.
Okay, then, one last comment. Mike?
Yeah, I got that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road. Um, I did talk to the library director tonight. She confirmed that there was both an A and E, uh, an architectural survey done before twenty twenty. I don't remember the date, but I did remember that she said the engineering review and there's a report on it. But what it says, she wasn't sure, was done in twenty twenty. And I, I do recall about that time because I came back in twenty twenty one to the town about and I heard mention of that. And, um, to all the select board comments on this, um, I would recommend that you get a professional engineer sign off on some sort of design for this. There's a particular technique, I was involved with it on a library and a historic building in Pennsylvania. It's called underpinning. So when you go to do structural work on a foundation, there are certain procedures and protocols you follow. I would recommend that you check to see if those procedures and, uh, protocols pass your acceptance. Thank you.
While it is a town building, the funds currently fall under the purview of the library board of trustees. So that's who we would have to go in front of to change what is going on there, unless the town was interested in investing more money, which could.
So, so will you pass on our feelings to the, and concerns?
Absolutely. Okay.
All right.
Uh, wait a minute.
Back to you, sir.
Senator Durant was able to secure a bond for the study of a overlay district on the Pitterville sand pits in that sand pit area. See what kind of development could be over there if it was zoned appropriately. This fell right in line with our conversation a couple of days ago. Bond money, I don't know who knows about this, is not real money. It is.
Is Eddie money real money?
This is more an idea than, than it is money.
Okay, just saying.
Bond money tends to come out, but it tends to come out via executive office grants down the road. So it's good to be on the, on the state's list, but this isn't cash in hand.
How about bond money in the boil?
That I spoke with Kevin today, who he's checking in with the people that installed the old boiler 'cause there are, is no asbestos in the chimney, but they believe there might be asbestos in the boiler.
Oh, my God.
So we'll have to figure that out.
But that's.
Long story short, and I've only talked to Peter about this 'cause he stopped by, the, I went back to get another quote from the boiler company McCoskey because it had been six months since they gave me the boiler quote. And they said, oh, we have to look into that. Their only question was if there was asbestos in the chimney. So I reached out to Kevin at Quabin.
Yeah.
Who gave me the update that I'm gonna give next. And he noted that while there was no asbestos in the chimney, he was uncertain if there was asbestos inside. And he would rather run that now than later. I'm anticipating an email from him today or tomorrow.
It's not old enough. Uh, I'm just gonna say I don't think there is 'cause it's not old enough. I mean, it's what, a thirty five year old boiler?
Yeah.
What is that for you, in the eighties?
Eighty nine.
Okay.
I know that.
To a fact.
It's a fairly modern boiler from.
Yeah, I, I know.
Boiler standards, if you don't know what I mean. The one before probably had asbestos, if there was one before.
Trying to say that in camera. Yeah, that wasn't like white to use. It's like lip paint. It just, it comes to a point where that age doesn't make sense.
Hmm.
So what I'm going to say right now is what I know about this.
Okay.
Am I gonna be elevated?
No.
Okay.
While I was talking to Kevin, he noted that they were doing the checklist of improvements that the environmental protection, the DEP secretary had reached out for a couple of months ago. Remember that really long document that I sent you on a Friday morning? That was very, that seemed scarier than it actually was. They have begun doing their checklist of items, which he's going to email me and I will send to you guys. One of the only noticeable things you'll notice is they are going to put a fence around these pipes that are sticking out of the ground. I will email you more information on this soon.
Where is that?
Right in front of the school, this door.
Okay.
This door. What, what the hell are we talking about? What?
Kindergarten door right here?
One of the doors over there?
Okay.
What pipes?
This one right here.
This one right here. There's pipes that are sticking out of the building, um, and that's where main street walkers used to pick up for kindergarten.
I'll send you the email.
They're putting the fence around them because kids are climbing on them or tripping over them or what have you.
Why don't they remove the pipes?
Cause the pipes are connected to the water supply.
Oh, those water pipes?
Yeah, because, yeah, 'cause that's what he was doing.
Yeah.
It say water pipes. It said pipes.
Outside?
Mm-hmm.
Why are there water pipes outside? Doesn't that freeze?
Should we take the field trip?
Yeah, let's take, I, let's take a field trip.
Let's go. You got a flashlight?
They, they met a number of the, of the expectations from the DEP, like putting new covers on top and.
Camouflage.
Yeah, number.
Is it raining?
Storm.
Is it?
Okay.
Good.
There's a lot of balls on the roof.
Lot of balls on the roof.
That's not a safety thing. I'm just like, damn, what the hell?
But I will have an update on that.
Takes a lot to get on the roof, too.
Okay, hell.
Sure goes.
Training.
It was up there.
I have been accepted into the MMA Suffolk Municipal HR program. It is a all fall Friday Zoom program, so that will be loads of fun.
It sounded.
Yeah. The treasurer collector is going to be attending annual treasurer collector school. The brand new assistant treasurer collector will be going with her. That's August thirteenth and, thirteenth and fourteenth.
Okay, so be close on those days then.
I'm gonna try. We have, the drop boxes will be open, so she'll only be here.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but you'll be, yeah, but that's if you pay check, pay cash.
Out of here, so.
In, in due time, once she's trained, we're going to also bond Patricia so that she couldn't take payment when they're gone as well.
Okay.
That's in the plan. The town clerk attended clerk's conference in, in late June. She said she had a great time and learned a lot.
I'm sure she did.
All right. Staff and department recognition. I would like to recognize the town clerk for successfully holding her first election. I was really happy that she could have a slower election and not just get thrown into, hey, here's a presidential, nice to meet you.
Presidential, yeah.
I would like to thank the treasurer collector for her extra op, for her extra efforts over the last couple of weeks. Working without an assistant treasurer collector, she has had to close out the fiscal year while maintaining the front, front office. And speaking with residents, it has been impressive and I thank Mary for her extra work. The fire department put out their first half of the year report and they have responded to three hundred and ninety four incidents, which can be, are broken out on the fire department's Facebook page.
How does that compare to last year, previous years?
I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
And that is my town administrator report. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out anytime.
I do.
Yes.
For you. I saw a post on Facebook about the Ware River watershed access meeting coming up again.
Mm-hmm.
We should probably go to that on, I think it's in August.
Yeah, it's in August or September. I saw that as well.
From the, the director of, see how much they're taking away there for parking and everything else.
Yes. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Although, I mean, it's more or less in Rutland, right, where they're hurting everything down by the prison or whatever that thing was, the old prison?
Yeah, the.
But they, you know.
Are they closing that, closing it or?
Well, they're making it, they're still putting a fence up, uh, allowing wheelchairs to go in, but it's not an easy in.
Hmm.
You know what I mean? So not really handicap accessible.
It, well, you're not gonna get anything.
Well, it's supposed to be.
For what, the old prison camp?
Well, there's certain areas around the prison camp that where there are gates, they have to make it accessible to handicapped people and they're not doing a very good job.
I've walked all over them. I can't imagine any of that being.
They open the actual gates.
Telling you what they said at the meeting.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's the whole thing, 'cause sometimes they're closed and you gotta park way out and then other times it's open, you can park in the middle of it.
Right, but I mean, if you're a handicap person, now they're gonna go.
Well.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, even if you're handicapped, it's, the, the ruins aren't very accessible up there.
Well, they're gonna get on the stick and fix it then.
Okay, I think we need to move on.
Hey.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, policies review. I don't believe we have any, right?
This evening, as I stated during your retreat, we will be. As I stated during your retreat, I will be putting together a whole biannual policy review schedule, which I hope to have in the coming meetings.
Okay. Uh, Matt does not reasonably interest private share. I don't have any. Does anyone have anything?
Oh, I can go, I can go now? Not ready, Chris.
No, we're not ready to go.
So, um. I've already let them know that the clock is wrong.
Clock is wrong.
Thank.
Um, can you help me understand why, when I came down South Street onto New Westminster Road yesterday, uh, the detour was in Westminster at the crossroads by the old dilapidated church?
They follow the roadwork. Is that what you mean?
But there was no roadwork. From Westminster to the town line of Hubbardstown.
Oh, so, yeah.
And then beyond Lombard. So why would the detour be in Westminster when there was no roadwork?
Because they weren't allowing, basically, the way it worked yesterday is they were paving towards Westminster yesterday and they got to Mayor Meadow Road. So that's why you couldn't go that way. I tried.
What does that have to do with?
Listen, I spent forty minutes driving around.
Well, I know a lot of people did that complaint to me and they said, why couldn't I just come down to get to my house and beyond?
I was pissed. They said because it wasn't safe because of all the ten wheelers coming up with the new products.
So why, why weren't they detoring them down Lombard?
I don't, I didn't do it. I didn't set up. I'm just telling you what they told me, 'cause I was, you know.
Per Mass General Law, all of that is explicitly a power given to the police chief. I will get you an answer on it.
Wouldn't Lombard make it longer for a detour?
Well, they were using Lombard to go get new asphalt because all the turns and turning on the Lombard, so.
Yeah, but that would take, that's what I mean. That would take you down to sixty two. If you went down Minot and came down, you'd end up at, um, the corner of Old Westminster, New Westminster.
So they started the railroad tracks, they're heading what, towards Westminster, that's, and they finished it, Mayor Meadow.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're only going as far as Mayor Meadow.
Yeah.
So why would we, why would we detour from Mayor Meadow all the way into Westminster on South Street?
Because they didn't want you traveling past the railroad tracks. So you had to go up Old Westminster Road.
Yeah.
To Minot.
Rail, railroad tracks. I'm talking coming from Westminster.
That's the same thing, it would be the backwards way.
I'm telling you why they had it closed. They didn't, I'm telling you.
Cause Lombard would be way out.
I, I went right that morning. I couldn't come back that way. I had to go all the way around, come back up through and go up, uh, Bemis Road.
Yeah.
Cause I couldn't come back that way. So they had, in the afternoon, they had that way blocked off, so they didn't want any people coming down past Mayor Meadow.
So it sounds like this is a concern some folks have had, just understanding why and how it works and I think needs suggested that.
Well, there was no communication out there on what to do and where to go, you know, in the afternoon.
Well, yeah. Nate can check with Ryan.
Need a better signage.
Nate, Nate can check with Ryan.
We'll talk with Ryan and Travis in the morning.
Yeah, 'cause some of the people, I understand what Chris is saying. If they could, if they lived in that area, like where you live, it would make more sense to be able to come that way.
Okay.
Right, right.
And I understand what you're saying.
So my kids and people I know who live down that way.
Got rerouted all the way around.
Got rerouted all around through town.
When they could have just came with no.
For absolutely no reason. They just had to go around the.
Yeah.
So I brought, I brought it up to the police sergeant. I said, there should be a detailer at the, at, at Westminster and they put one there today.
So if they lived there. Yeah. If you live in a certain area, you should be allowed to cut through rather than have to go into a tour.
A lot of people just saw the detour and were going up Minot, so now today there's a detour.
I do know from a very good source that there's no legally binding recourse for not listening to those unless a police officer tells you to stop.
Oh, I do. I did, but people I know did.
Yeah. Like, yeah, I was talking to the chief and that's.
Cause I knew paving was starting at Mayor Meadow, which, you know, I'm wondering why is this sign even here? Okay, wanna come on that?
Okay, all right, uh, public press. Okay, we will, uh, be adjourned from the open meeting and going into executive session. So I'll read the reason and, um, and ask for a motion for adjournment. The intent of moving into the executive session, at which point we will exit executive session, back to the open meeting for the sole purpose of adjournment. All right, um, we're moving into executive session under Mass General Law, chapter thirty nine, paragraph twenty three B, six. Uh, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, so declare on the negotiating position of the public body, forty eight Gardner Road. Um, so this is a roll call, first of all, do we have any motion to adjourn from the open session?
Some of them.
Motion made, second.
Second.
On, all in favor of adjournment to the open session?
Yeah, I.
Hi.
Opposed. We're adjourned. I have a motion to move.